It is May 18th, 2020, and I call the meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. Tonight Commissioner Ronnie Reese will lead us into invocation and then Vice Chairman Larry Yoder will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. You would, Commissioner Reese, go ahead.
Let's pray. Father, unto you today, we thank you for the protection, for the guidance you've given us so far through these unusual times and things that we're experiencing. Pray for those that have experienced sickness during this COVID-19 pandemic, things that's going on, for those that have experienced death. I pray for the families and for just protect us as we go through these things, give us wisdom as we meet tonight. We'll make decisions and we move Alexander County forward. Pray for all our leaders, from the president all the way down to state, local level, county and town, that we would all be looking to you for our wisdom, where it comes from. But thank you for the things that you give to us for the good day we've had so far this day. Give us a safe journeys as we travel to different places and as things are opening up, please you give us a speedy recovery from these things we've experienced. Director meeting tonight, we'll thank you for it in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Stan? Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, Commissioners' report, is there anything any of the Commissioners would like to report on?
Mr. Chairman, I think we've written the letter to the governor, to the Secretary of Transportation, and tell all those folks who are involved with DOT, letting them know how we feel about the Lyle Down Road and ask them to try to get something done. And just probably just about 30 minutes ago, DOT released some information that due to budget woes, that they are now furloughing some employees of the North County Department of Transportation. I have not heard anything back, don't know whether any of you have or not, but the folks that I talked to continue to say it's budget woes. But I mean, it's going on long enough and this was storm damage and I really feel like they should have already taken care of it. But I just want the general public out there to know that the Commissioners are doing all that we can do and talking to the people that we can talk to, to try to get something done about the Lyle Down Road.
And I'll add that we have been trying for over a year and, not over a year, almost a year. You know, not long after it happened, but we've just not gotten a lot of help from Raleigh.
Mr. Chairman, it might be good to note too that there's nothing that we can physically or monetarily do about that road because it is a state road and a state responsibility. And no part of our budget can go towards fixing that road because it's not our road to fix. I think that some people are a little confused about that, but it's totally out of our purview.
Yes, that's correct. But we've, we're still trying, we're still working on it. I don't know what kind of result we'll get, but we haven't gotten a lot of response from the governor on anything, so. Anyone else like to report on anything? I'll just add that I just want to, you know, give a thank you to all the people out there that are working in those jobs. Healthcare, working at the grocery stores, Walmart, you know, it's you're doing a job that, you know, is taking care of the public and EMS, police, fire, everyone. All right, if anybody, if nobody else has anything else to add, well, you've got the agenda before you. Is there any additions or deletions or do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion of second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number one on the agenda is the public hearing. It is the Alexander County 2020, 2021 proposed budget. And I call Rick French County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we open the public hearing as it concerns the 2021 budget.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes unanimously, we are in a public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. French, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, we did, had a, held a work session to review the proposed budget. The general fund budget that's proposed is $42,892,442. There are no tax increases, fee increases or billing increases, zoning or fire inspection increases. There's no fire tax increases also. In our budget, we discussed the Alexander County Schools, they requested $7,650,060. And that is the amount, that is the amount of that is recommended, the $265,060 increase from 6.8 billion they currently receive. There are no new employees either full or part-time in the budget. There are no salary increases or travel and training, education, line items are being held to the 1920 budget standards. There are two seasonal employees in the Elections Department that are proposed. There are a number of capital outlay items and just briefly, the larger items, I'll just say a few words about. The line, the capital items are replacing the light poles at Bethlehem Park. That's $100,000, replacing four DSS vehicles, that's 90,000. Ambulance lots on the chassis for EMS, 100,000, replacing four vehicles and equipment, with the equipment in the Sheriff's Department, 230,000 dollars. Replacing their vehicle in the Sheriff's Department, 57,500 dollars. Seeing the vehicle at emergency services, 56,000 dollars. Placing a very old transmitter at 911, 25,000. Upgrades at Lenny Mill Tower, 40,000, all-site disaster recovery mode, which was requested by IT. 98,500 CBCC security cameras at both the buildings, 20,000, and replacing a zero-term board maintenance, which is 10,000. We are planning on budgeting $2,852,000 out of fund balance. The City of Hickory is considering 3.75 water rate increase. That's the only increase in rates we have in our budget and that will be effective July 1st, 2020. Of course, that's dependent on, contingent on the City Council of Hickory to approving such thing and passing it on to us. There's no rate increases in sewer or solid waste. And one thing I like to say, I forgot to say about earlier about capital items. All the capitals, capital items are in contingency, they're in each department budget. These funds cannot be considered for funding until January revenue is reviewed. We should not move forward until we are at a good place with all of our revenues. County Commissioners will receive a report in January and we'll discuss replacing those items or releasing those items. The Commissioners have reviewed all the 2021 budget items, the budget was presented on May 4th at a work session and had a work session on May the 11th. And I'll be glad, I just wanted to do a quick overview, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have, unless I have questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Just one about the off-site recovery for IT. Where will that be?
I believe it'll be, I believe, what? I keep hearing something. I believe it'll be in, in Raleigh, there's a, we have an upgraded place there where we keep those, that, those, that information, Jeff.
Just like in a server vault, server form.
Yes, sir.
Not Alexander County server form in Raleigh though. Anyone else? I guess this is a public hearing, so how do we conduct, what do we do here because?
We have not received, I don't believe, Jamie could let us confirm it, we've not received no comments from the public about the budget or had any phone calls about the budget.
Okay. All right, well then, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Okay, second. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Now, the rules are a little different this time, so we have to wait until our next meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. We'll have a budget ordinance for you at that time.
I'm sorry?
We'll have a budget ordinance ready for you to, for that time.
Okay, okay. So we'll go on to item number two on the agenda, which is a COVID-19 update. And we'll speak to Leanne Wisnig and Doug Gillespie. If you'd like to go ahead, Leanne.
I will, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As currently, we have 22 cases. We had five new cases this morning and two more late this afternoon came in. We will have one hospitalized as of this afternoon. One of those new cases is, is very ill and is, was headed to the hospital. We have, of those seven, four are linked with the Tyson food outbreak. On a positive note, I checked surrounding counties just to see where we stand and, you know, we, we certainly didn't want more than, we didn't want any cases, much less 22. But we are still faring very well compared to our neighbors. Caldwell's at 86, Wilkes has 425, and all of our surrounding counties have had a death. So we are blessed that we have no deaths, we hope to keep it like that. We still have 12 quarantined and 10 have fully recovered. We, I spent most of today, or part of today, working with the high school to prepare for graduation. And I commend them on working really hard to give our graduates something special that's not just a virtual graduation. I think they've done a great job making sure that we plan well and keep our citizens safe. So, and that is a moving target, you know, as, as I said this morning, we had five new cases and about 30 minutes before our meeting, we are up to seven. So we will keep you updated.
Do you have any idea, Leanne, where the other ones came from? You said the four were related to the Tyson.
The others are community acquired and we're still trying to, you know, figure out where, but sometimes, you know, when you've been shopping and in other counties, you know, there's no other link to another outbreak. So we, you know, when we don't have a clear link to some other outbreak, we just categorize it as community acquired. Doesn't mean it was always in our county, it could be, you know, from lots of places. Sometimes we, we just can't track it down to, to where.
Leanne?
Yes.
Did you, did you say if any of our folks were in a critical state?
We have, we have one recent case today that is going to be hospitalized. I wouldn't say he was critical, but I would say he was very sick.
Okay, thank you.
But we have no deaths and so we hope he gets good care and recovers. Because the other one that was hospitalized last meeting has recovered in his home. So I wanted to make sure you knew it wasn't the same hospitalized case.
Leanne, what are you hearing about wide, a wider spread testing or antibody testing?
Yes, we, we, we actually are contracting with a new lab today as we speak. Because we have a large industry in county that's wanting to test all of their employees. There's been, a lot of their staff is, has family or lives in Wilkes County, so there's some concerns there. There's been a few scares, so we actually found a company, it's been really hard to get enough tests, we needed over 300. So they are being FedEx to us for tomorrow. So we do plan on Wednesday testing over 300 people. We also contacted Quest, our current lab, and their supply has increased, so they have promised to ship us 20 tests a day. So we're really pleased with where we're going. The antibody tests are still not available through the state. But the company, the new company that the state is recommending, it's called Mako, they're actually Raleigh-based and our representative is out of Charlotte. They actually have an antibody test that they just released. There's not codes for it yet as far as billing insurance. But we are working on pricing with them, so we hope very soon to be doing some antibody testing. So we're definitely, we're definitely seeing increased supplies come in. We, we're really pleased with that because we've been wanting to do more tests for a long time, but couldn't, you know, we couldn't find supplies. They were going, and rightly so, they were going to counties with big outbreaks like Wilkes and Burke County has had some long-term care outbreaks. So, you know, the state is prioritizing where some of those supplies goes and they're going to, you know, that high-risk population. And we understand that, but we've been really diligent trying to find, to get what we need for our county.
Leanne, going back to kind of you was talking about where the cases originated from. Do you feel like maybe the other counties, even Wilkes County, are they doing as much as they need to to kind of control it? And I heard that, you know, Tyson had been closed for a day or two days, but you have no idea how many more cases we might have from there, do you?
We really don't, we, I kind of felt like the first of this week, we would be seeing the end of that based on when they finished testing all of their people. But the problem with that is now we're going to see those closed household contacts. So, you know, hopefully we've kept it to that, just that one employee. But if we have not, or they've, you know, before they knew they were positive, they exposed family members, we may start seeing, seeing that. And as we test more, we're going to see more positives. But I do think they're doing all they can do. I think all these counties, I mean, I know all of the public health programs are, are doing as much as they possibly can do. You know, Wilkes has 425 positive cases, so, and a death. Catawba has 104 cases, Iroquois 192, Caldwell, 86 cases and two deaths, so. We're, but I did listen to the governor's conference this morning talking about the parameters and going into phase two. And we still are on track for that, I mean, our numbers are still maintaining, even though it sounds like it's more, they're doing it based on the percentage. Not just the number of positives, but a percentage based on the number of tests versus the positives. And overall, the state is still at about 7% of all people tested being positive.
Okay. So there, what you're saying is they're increasing the number of tests on people and it's still hanging at 7%?
Correct.
Whereas before, it was the absolute worst of the worst were getting tested and they didn't have enough tests and it was still 7%, is that right?
Yes, because remember through all this phase, you know, there was times when we, we weren't given tests and so we were having to turn people away. We hated that, but the states changed the criteria of who could be tested, you know, multiple times. Early on, we can only test those frontline responders and the high-risk clients. So we weren't, you know, there weren't other people that were sick and potentially positive, but we just didn't have tests to administer. So now, as the tests are starting to come, I think the numbers were like testing 65, 7,500 tests a day. And at one point, that was in the hundreds. So we have come a long way acquiring tests. And I think when we get to the antibody test, we can get a little more perspective on what our immunity actually is. Because I am, I am fairly convinced that we've seen this virus earlier and there's probably people that weren't very sick, thought it was allergies, thought it was, you know, sinusitis, all kinds of things that, that were in the asymptomatic or not very ill, that was not tested and aren't counted in our numbers. So it'll be nice to be able to do some of those antibody testing. Those will be blood draws. Right now, the actual tests are nasopharyngeals and antibody tests are going to be blood draws, a very different procedure.
How long do you think it'll be before you start? How long do you think it'll be before you start with the antibody test?
I'm hoping in the next week. Like I said, we're working with this other lab company that does have a test. It would be at the county's expense, so, you know, we would start with those that if we had an outbreak or if we had a long-term care facility that we were needing to test or county employees that we think may have recovered. We have a few of those that, you know, I think there's been a few false positives with the actual tests, so. And that's part of what the state is wanting to do with some of this antibody testing is actually be able to calculate what our immunity, immunity really is in North Carolina. So hopefully in the next week to two, for sure, this, we've been hearing for the last week that the state is very, very close to a state-approved test, which means if we have uninsured individuals, we can send it to the state and it would not be an expense directly to the county. But we wanted, the other reason we haven't done some testing, like antibody testing, is that we were waiting for accurate tests. Early on, a month ago, the antibody tests were like 50, 60% effective. So even though you test, you know, you still have a 40% chance that that test is not accurate. To me, that's not well-spent money. And they're now getting into the 90 percentile. Depending on the, the timeframe that you test, some of the tests are 95 to 98% accurate. So that's, those are the tests we want to do.
Somebody else had a question.
You kind of answered it, with the antibody test, if, if you were sick back in February or January or March, will you be able to get that test? Or is it going to be?
Yes, the, the, the earlier you do that test, the less accurate. So let's say you're within that first week of actually being sick, we would actually want to do the nasopharyngeal test. So let's say it was in that, a week after symptoms went away, the word wasn't coming, sorry y'all. We, the test would be like in the, in the 80% accuracy rate, like 83%. Then 14 to 21 days, it goes up to hit 90. And the timeframe you're talking about, Dr. Peel, would be like 96, 97% accurate. Because your body would have built up those antibodies showing us that you had been exposed and had built up immunity. Now, how long that would stay positive, we're not sure, but it should be well back to February.
So I guess my question is if you were sick in February or March, you say, hey, I want to be tested because, and you'd be able to get the test?
Yes. And we want to do those tests so we know, you know, hey, we've done 10 of those tests and, you know, what we would hope is 10 had immunity. But that also lets you know we've had a lot of virus too here, so you're probably going to see that 7% would come back positive.
Thank you.
It's probably going to mirror what our positive rate has been.
Is Doug there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Doug, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, and, and I'll just back up with Leanne with the results. I'm a statistics and data type of guy and on, and I went, the last time I checked was May 1st. We were at a 7.83% chance of COVID patients that were the ones tested. And as of today, this morning at 11 o'clock, we're down to a 7.43%. So I'm keeping up with the data and we're seeing, we're right now, with what we've tested in North Carolina, we're at about 2.43% of people tested in North Carolina. And that's just using a rough estimate of our population in North Carolina is at 10.5 million, or 10.5 million. So Leanne, what she was talking about was very correct and seeing, we're seeing significant, I wouldn't say significant, but we're seeing that trend drop of what we're expecting. As far as EMS, we're still running, just like we normally do, we're still seeing that slight uptake in calls itself. My guys are doing real good, if they suspect one, I've got documentation to see who they are. And if Leanne comes up and says, we've got one, we try to sort of discuss if EMS was involved and she's keeping good, or good data for me on that. EM, we've actually, we've had some issues with one of our long-term facilities. No COVID cases, but they were coming into an issue where they don't have the staff right now. So we did put in a request through the state and we have five employees or five graduates that are coming to work for this long-term facility. Two of them are RNs and three of them are CNAs, that long-term facility is working with them. We are starting to see a little bit of shortage on the surgical masks that we house here. And we're trying to get some of those ordered and, and a couple of other little, the concepts, the gowns, which has been in short, or in, in short supply, is, is still in short supply. So another thing that EM has done over the last couple of weeks, if you go by the, the Law Enforcement Center, you'll see that we've got some food resource committee set up. So if we do need to look at some food for the population after school starts, we've got a housing area for that. Other than that, we are still, still as busy as possible. If you got any questions, I'll be glad to ask them.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Doug, and appreciate all the hard work you guys are putting in. I know it's, you know, it, it's your Super Bowl time right now, not, you know, you're, you're on deck, you guys are up there fighting, we appreciate it. You're doing a lot for our community, I think. Mr. French, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, Rocky Face Park, we're having a lot of hikers. Talking with Alicia Stamey, our director at Rocky Face. We're recommending that rock climbing start on May 22nd, we add that. And also we extend the park hours from eight to six to eight to eight, that's their normal hours. And we also start that on, on May 22nd. I think I believe, I sent you a copy of Judge Graham's email addressing courts opening on June the 1st. And they were requesting additional cleaning, some hand cleanser for all the courtroom tables and equipment and preparing it's mounted. And Ross Mitchell has contacted Judge Graham and Danny Dyson, our clerk of court, and we're working on those items. Those items were eligible to get refunded for that, those costs.
Okay, good. I'll just add one thing. You know, there's quite a few of these cases that are coming in that are, seem to be community-spread. And if you're a business owner or you work at a restaurant, you're a manager, you need to really think about and review what you're doing as far as interacting with the public. Because, I mean, I've went to multiple, multiple restaurants, you know, for lunch and, you know, going through the drive-through. There is a huge difference between different restaurants and how they're conducting business and and interacting with customers and taking money or debit cards. Some of them do it very well. Some of them, I mean, you know, I, I have to spray my food down with antibacterial before I eat it. So what, what, I, I assume there's a lot of resources out there for restaurants to look at, figure out what's the best way to conduct business with public. Am I right on that, Leanne?
Yes, the Centers for Disease Control has some great resources. It's also on the state website, too. I mean, step by step, what they recommend. If, if somebody has trouble finding it, call me. I'll get it to them.
I mean, I, I don't understand why they wear gloves and they take your debit card and then they fill your drink up and they hand it back to you, but they don't change the gloves, nor do they put any antibacterial on. So, you know, it might be keeping that one person safe from it, but it's not keeping the hundreds of people that are going through the drive-through safe. So anyway, my two cents. Do you guys have anything to add? Anything else, anyone? If not, we'll go on to item number three on the agenda, which is a resolution adopting the Alexander County Parks Plan, the site-specific master plan for Dusty Ridge Park and Recreation capital improvements plan. And Leanne, you're going to hang around later, but thank you, Doug, for being here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, actually behind item four, behind the resolution requesting the grant application, is the park plan. And the resolution is part of what is required for us to apply, give us more points, if you will. And it's a resolution adopting the county parks plan, the site-specific master plan for Dusty Ridge Park and the recreation capital improvements plan. And you have all the information behind the other item. And just look at that as your, whenever you have an affinity, there's a lot of good information there. There's also a lot of information that'll guide us as we move forward with our parks. Not only do, are we going after a part of grant, as you all are aware, improvements at Dusty Ridge and also improvements at access. More to follow, but we would recommend the resolution. Commissioners.
Anyone having questions? All right, I'm going to read this very quickly, but the resolution states, a resolution adopting the Alexander County Parks Plan, the site-specific master plan for Dusty Ridge Park and Recreation Capital Improvements Plan. Whereas Alexander County has partnered with the Western Peamont Council of Governments to create a comprehensive parks and recreation plan designed to reflect the needs and desires of the county and of its citizens as related to future parks planning within the county. And whereas public input was gathered from over fourteen-hundred parks, survey respondents, and public meeting participants. And whereas the result of these, those discussions is the Alexander County Parks Plan, presented to the commissioners this date for review, a copy of which shall be on permanent file in the Alexander County Administration Building. And whereas the site-specific master plan for Dusty Ridge Park is included as Appendix B of the Alexander County Parks Plan. Whereas the Recreation Capital Improvements Plan is included as Appendix C of the Alexander County Parks Plan. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Alexander County, North Carolina, that the Alexander County Parks Plan, the site-specific master plan for Dusty Ridge Park, and the Recreation Capital Improvements Plan as presented are hereby adopted and that the Board of Commissioners hereby expresses its intent that such document be used henceforth as a reference in the creation of all ordinances, rules, and regulations to the extent that they each may impact the parks, facilities for Alexander County. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the, the resolution just as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm not sure if this is relevant. But does this cover the other resolution that we have in our packet, too, authorizing for the trust fund grant? Is that?
It does not, no.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item number five on the agenda, which is the resolution authorizing the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant Application for Courthouse Park. And is David here, David Ostenhauer?
Sir, I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So this is basically part two of the presentation from your last meeting about the proposed courthouse park. As you will recall at your last meeting, you approved the master plan for that specific proposed park. And so following that May fourth approval of that plan, posted information about the master plan on Facebook, which is part of the proposed part of application, should you choose to. Part if required, public participation in the application. So in this day of COVID-nineteen, when we couldn't have those meetings publicly, we did it virtually through Facebook. We posted that on May fifth. We reached, according to Facebook analytics, five thousand two hundred and twenty-seven people with that Facebook post. There were a total of a hundred and thirty-one comments, most of which were posted, but not all. In general, there were a lot of questions about parking and about fencing for safety measures. There were questions about seating, ADA compliance, water fountains, restrooms, shade. There were concerns, I guess, from a couple of people about funding availability, having enough space for the park amenities, and of course, funds for roads, which are not related. But those were some of the comments that were made. Mr. Chairman, I think you have the resolution. But other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that the board might have as far as the resolution and the park plan.
Is anyone having questions? Okay, I will read the resolution out. State's resolution authorizing the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Grant Application. Whereas the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund provides dollar-for-dollar grants to local governments for use in acquiring land and/or developing parks and recreation projects that serve the general public. And whereas Alexander County Board of Commissioners believes that additional parks and recreation facilities significantly enhance the quality of life for the residents, property owners, and visitors to the county. And whereas the proposed courthouse park will provide recreational and cultural amenities that currently do not exist in the county. And whereas Alexander County owns a one-point-two acre site suitable for development of the proposed park. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes a grant application to the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars and will provide matching funds in the amount of four hundred thirty-three thousand and thirty-seven dollars. The county manager is hereby authorized to file such, such application on behalf of the county to provide additional information and furnish such documents as may be required by the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and to act as the authorized agent of the county. And, okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution. As you read.
Okay, and I will second it. Is there any discussion? I'll just add that this is about the courthouse park there. It's going to be Alexander County Park with the splash pad and the stage, you know, having concert, summer concerts, that's what I think. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will move on to item number five on the agenda, resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to take an active role in keeping our voting process safe from voter fraud. I will read this resolution out. Resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to take an active role in keeping our voting process safe from voter fraud. Whereas the Alexander County Board of Commissioners is a body politic of the state government of North Carolina and constitutionally sanctioned to govern as its agent at the local level on many issues important to the citizens of North Carolina. And whereas Alexander County Government is charged with administering the election, electing of local, state, and federal government political representatives, as all one hundred North Carolina counties are similarly charged to do. And whereas the North Carolina Board of Elections has publicly stated that they will ask the North Carolina General Assembly to legislate a new law making absentee voting less restrictive, which could result in the absentee voting process being less secure from voter fraud. Whereas the North Carolina Board of Elections and North Carolina government are currently being sued by the government Transparency Watchdog Judicial Watch for keeping a million inactive voters on its county's voting rolls while denying the public its right to obtain information about voter registration list maintenance, thus creating, however unintended, an enriched environment whereby voter fraud may occur. And whereas North Carolina's system of voting for elected office has recently been embroiled in scandal, again, however unintended, where the process of absentee voting ballot harvesting produced an unreliable outcome in a congressional election, forcing a second election while leaving that congressional district unrepresented for many months. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners respectfully requests that the North Carolina General Assembly take no action during this critical period of time due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic to change and therefore weaken North Carolina's general statutes pertaining to elections. And I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. I would just like to ask that our clerk posts this to all of the other ninety-nine counties in North Carolina. Okay, we'll move on to item number six on the agenda. Resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to enact legislation to limit the powers of the North Carolina governor from acting unilaterally for an extended period of time. Whereas during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and while the North Carolina General Assembly was out of session, Governor Roy Cooper acted unilaterally without the consent of North Carolina's Council of State to first close our public schools and then many businesses while limiting, and in some cases eliminating our citizens' United States constitutional rights to assemble. And whereas during this extended period of closures, which has twice been extended, Governor Cooper acted unilaterally by misapplying the Emergency Act, Emergency Powers Act to promote into fruition the terrible consequence of a destroyed economy in North Carolina. And whereas Governor Cooper has acted unilaterally without the benefit of specific knowledge, irrespective, irrespective that the best knowledge is still yet unknown. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners respectfully requesting North Carolina General Assembly to begin the process of developing general statutes to better define the Emergency Powers Act and immediately initiate the process to stop future North Carolina governors from acting unilaterally and unchecked for extended periods of time. And I'll make that in the form of a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? I'll just add, yes, sir, go ahead.
I, I, I just want to say that, you know, I, I, I'm totally against what's happening in North Carolina as far as something is concerned. But it, it concerns me quite a bit about wanting to limit the governor's ability to do the things that need to be done, done sometimes to keep our state safe. And I think that this day may have been prolonged too long. But at the same time, I think our governor has some directives that they need to go by. And there may be a time that whoever the next governor is, maybe he has to make some of these decisions also. And I think we need to strike strong and hard about requesting that we limit the powers of the governor in certain circumstances. And that's just my opinion on this thing. I talked to several people today about this, and some of them hadn't even heard that this resolution was even out there. And I talked to a couple of people at the association and they, it's like they said, you know, sometimes the governor has to make decisions that affect a lot of people. They just felt like that, you know, you got to be careful of what you request because if we change governors or something, then, you know, there may be a time that he may have to use some type of regulations to stop some type of problem in the state. And that's just my opinion and based on what we'll be at that I've talked to some other commissioners in the association.
Mr. Chairman. And, and I don't disagree with you. What, what this has to do with was the General Assembly was out of session and that he acted unilaterally. And there's some, you know, there, it's not very clear. I will say it's not very clear. It's somewhat muddied in that he was supposed to seek the North Carolina Council of State's blessing on that. And, you know, I, I have no problem with the governor being able to act in, in an emergency or a health crisis. All this says is that they need to develop a plan as to when does, you know, how, how long can the governor force his will without seeking some approval from either the General Assembly or the Council of State, which is the Lieutenant Governor, Secretary of State, that group of people, so.
Mr. Eric, I, I would agree with you in the fact that, that the governor does have to have emergency powers to do things. But, you know, we're going on a couple of months. And I think that, you know, consulting with the Council of State or the General Assembly certainly can help make even better and more informed decisions. I, I wouldn't want to restrict him from being able to act in an emergency situation either. But, you know, we're, we're sixty-plus days into this. And, you know, there's, there's time that you can talk and consult with other people as well and not just have it from one person.
And, and this, this wouldn't restrict, you know, the, the, the powers of the governor right now. But they need to develop a plan for if this, you know, something like this happens again. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We've got four, four for it and one against. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to item number seven on the agenda, which is Budget Ordinance Amendments Number Fifty-seven through fifty-nine. Calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have three budget amendments tonight. Budget Number Fifty-seven is the budget for receipt of Care provided relief fund grant or EMS. Grant funds will only be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. The funds shall reimburse the EMS provider for healthcare-related expenses or lost revenues that are attributable to the coronavirus. And this is very rare, was the first one we've seen where they are actually replacing revenue. Fifty-eight, Budget Amendment Fifty-eight is the budget for home and community health care block grant funds that have been released from adult daycare and provided to Alexander County DSS for housing and home improvement funds.
Attention and remind the public, you know, let us know. Um, COVID kinda took over my life there for, uh, well, I guess it still is. So I kinda missed a few recognitions, March, April, and May. So I want to, um, let our staff, all of our Health and Human Services staff have done a marvelous job during this very chaotic time. Uh, March was Social Worker Month. We had some great celebrations planned that had to be canceled because we couldn't congregate and, and do celebrations together. So we hope to do that in the future, but I want to, you know, remind people that those social workers, and we were gonna include the school social workers and hospice social workers. You know, it's not just DSS. Um, we have a public health social worker and lots of organizations in our community do. We were gonna celebrate all of them. April was Child Abuse Prevention Month and Department of Social Services, the Partnership for Children, you know, they did try to get information out to the public. We did some pingle gardens, some signage, but we weren't able to do events like we have in the past. So, um, Public Health Month was also April. They were very busy and I appreciate all that they have done and are continuing to do. And May is National Foster Care Month. So March, April, and May just was a wonderful opportunity to thank our Health and Human Services staff. And you see all the colorful, I like colorful, Donna. Um, I'm not sure exactly who these nurses are, but we could put Billy there somewhere, surely. And Billy's not here doing this because, um, we only had these few topics and I'll tell you, she has been working so hard, weekends, nights, these positive cases come in all hours. So, um, I told her, you know, you, you, let me handle it, this meeting. So I do appreciate her and the staff and, um, the Wednesday when they are out before the crack of daylight trying to get three shifts of employees done and, you know, dressed in their wonderful garb attire with PPE. I do appreciate all that they're doing. So wanted to, to celebrate them and bring it to your attention. And I'm going to stop sharing for a second and introduce you to, um, I hope Linda Clements is on the line.
I am, I just unmuted, thank you, Leanne.
Um, I wanna introduce you to Li- Linda Clements. Let me try to talk straight and find my notes. Linda is, and I am so grateful for Linda. She has come in the nick of time because a lot of my time has focused back on public health with COVID-19. But we, Linda actually has been at the Department of Social Services since October of 2018. In, uh, April and, uh, you know, that date's kinda fluid because even before her true start date, she was, um, doing a lot of the duties of our Assistant DSS Director. Would, I am thrilled to have her. She comes to us with over fifteen years of social services experience at the state and local level. I'm gonna let her take the next part of the presentation for the social services because last meeting, I think there was some, uh, questions around foster care, particularly the older children and, and what their options were. And this area is certainly one of her focuses. So, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Linda and let her talk to you about the county's foster care program.
Thank you, Leanne, I'm honored to be here. I'm also now going to attempt to share my screen. We got it, okay. Let me advance to catch up here. Okay, social services, uh, I will be focusing on, uh, foster care. Wanted to give you a little bit of a picture of our overall foster care children who we've got in our current care. Um, right now, we have a total of forty-six children. Uh, majority, they tend to be, uh, younger in age. We've got twenty from age zero to five, fifteen, age six to twelve, and eight age thirteen to seventeen. Uh, and then, as you can see in here in our foster care, eighteen to twenty-one, we currently have three. Also, the distribution male, female tends to be pretty equal in Alexander County. We have twenty-four female and twenty-two male. Want to talk a little bit of time about the types of placements that children, uh, may find themselves in. Uh, we, at this time, this is our, uh, current children. We have two in what we call a trial home placement, which is what we always strive for. These are two children that the parents have done what they've needed to, to rectify the situation in their home. So they are being monitored, that child in the home with their parents. And hopefully that, those cases will close in the next three to six months, um, by the court. We have ten children that are in kinship places. These are homes that have been identified by the parent. Uh, we then do a home study, make sure they meet our requirements, and then the court approves them. Typically, these are families that previously had a relationship with the child. So it's in their best interest to be able to be with someone they know. Most frequently, this is a relative. Then our family foster home. Of these family foster home, uh, eight are homes that are licensed currently by Alexander County. We have three that are licensed either by other counties or in another state in one case. And the rest are through private agencies. They are regular family, uh, foster homes. Six children are placed in therapeutic foster homes. These are still family foster homes, but these parents have a additional training on how to deal with children that may have some behaviors that a regular foster parent may not be able to handle. And then we have six that are in group homes. Uh, some of these are very high mental health needs that have disrupted and were unable to stay in a family or therapeutic home. A couple of these are older kids that have, uh, one in particular is locally in Alexander County and that's just where he has grown to be most comfortable. Um, and he's actually hopefully gonna age out successfully this year and join our foster care eighteen to twenty-one program at the end of the year. Right now, the next number is, we have the foster care eighteen and there's three young adults that are in that program for our same twenty-six children. Any questions about any of that?
Um, I, I guess, um, my question is, and I know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it, uh, you, do you need, uh, do you need more foster parents?
We always do and, um, you brought that up. We actually have a math class that's finishing up tonight. Uh, there are five couples in there. Um, after they finish the class, they still go through fingerprinting and, um, the home study to get licensed. But as many local foster homes as we can get and keep children in their home community, it's much less disruptive, hopefully, we don't have to change their school. The other advantage is we are often in a position where we have to place a child in the only home that has a vacancy. We're much better off if we can compare a home and see where their specialty might be, what age range, whatever children may be home, which is the best match for a child. And unfortunately, we don't usually have the option to, to do that. We have to take whatever placements available that we can find.
Your question?
Yeah, well, yes, um, I, I wish more people would, you know, I wish more people would act on the things that they say. Uh, a lot of people say, um, a lot of things about, you know, you need to do good. Well, this is one way you can do good, uh, it's very much needed. Um, the fost- foster care eighteen to twenty-one year olds, um, what old do you provide to help, you know, to help them? I mean, they don't have a family, they don't have, you know, advice a lot of times, um, from a, from a family member. I don't say that, some of them have family, uh, but they can't stay with them. So what, what do you do for those kids?
Um, if you are already withholding that question, a little further on in the PowerPoint, I'm gonna focus just on the eighteen to twenty-one and, um, see if I answer your question at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead then.
Thank you. Um, this just provides a little bit of a picture of how children leave our care. These are children in twenty nineteen. Uh, we were able to three, you know, reunify three. Um, we had nine that ended up being either placed in guardianship or custody with that relative or that kinship provider. We had ten that were adopted and we had three that aged out. Um, I'll get into later how many of those children came into the eighteen to twenty-one. Just a real quick background, um, how children end up in our custody. We have to be able to, uh, present in court and show that a child is either unsafe or at imminent risk of being unsafe and/or they're not getting their basic needs met. Uh, these all have to meet the statute that defines abuse, neglect, or dependency. And typically, when, when we've done that and we take custody, um, we have legal custody and we also normally have placement responsibility. Uh, sometimes the court will approve a specific placement, especially a relative. And we, um, have to let the court know if those placements disrupt in a more active manner than we would other, um, cases where we have kids placed in foster homes. And then, these are just some of the conditions and diagnosis that many of our children will have coming into custody, primarily due to the trauma they've experienced. Uh, and a many times, they will have a combination of these and this is often what will lead to the higher level of care. Um, some of it is as simple as anxiety, uh, fear, not knowing what to expect. Unfortunately, many with depression. Thankfully, we don't have very many that get to the point where there's any thoughts of suicide. Um, but that does occasionally come up. We have to deal with whether or not they really have a plan or not. Many of our young children come in with developmentally, excuse me, developmental delays, some from failure to thrive. Um, this often creates learning disabilities, which impacts their academic career. Conduct disorder, you hear about that mostly with teenagers. A lot of this acting out is really hiding their shame or guilt, um, about, or a low self-esteem about where they are. ADHD, three times, uh, the level of ADHD diagnosis is in our children in, uh, in foster care because of the trauma they've experienced. Um, RAD or reactive attachment disorder. This is rare, but it comes, it's developed in children who did not get their basic needs met and do not, have never developed the ability to develop social, um, attachments. These are really the, um, hard cases that will grow up and maybe not ever learn how to develop relationships. And then, uh, what you hear a lot about also is this prenatal exposure to cocaine, alcohol, or other narcotics, which can lead to the delays. So these are just some of the multiple diagnoses that we're often dealing with, with these children and helping them to overcome. All right, here I go, I will start about the eighteen to twenty. Is there anything else about general foster care?
I don't believe so.
All right, uh, for eighteen to twenty-one, this program is specifically to provide that support and help young adults transition from, in the, to the early years of adulthood. Any adult who ages out, young adult that ages out of foster care, um, has the option to voluntarily request this. Um, but there are criteria that they need to meet. And here is the first things voluntary agreement, which I talked about, but they must either be primarily working on education or employment. So this education could be through finishing high school. They can be going to post-secondary or vocational education or even, uh, a program to support them getting employment. They can be working eighty hours a month or they can have, uh, a medical or other disability that prevents them from getting education or employment. They must agree to li- reside in an approved placement and I will spend a little more time talking about what this is. So here's the placements that they, we are very open to different placements. Uh, the whole purpose of the program is to help support the young adults. So the flexibility in what kind of placement they pick, as long as it's safe, is pretty broad. So they can remain in the foster home that they were in or the facility and we will, um, help pay that board. They could be in college and we'll help pay for the dorm rate. Or they can be in what's called a semi-supervised independent living. This could be an apartment, um, and they could have a host family. Maybe their, a good friend in high school is willing to let them move in and maybe pay some rent, um, an extended family member. They cannot qualify this program and return to the family from whom they were removed. That is a criteria that they're not able to do in getting to this program. And then here comes to your question. If they do choose to enter the program, uh, they are eligible for a, a monthly maintenance payment. That payment can be made to the individual or it can be made if they stay in a foster home or if they live with another family. And, um, maybe based on immaturity or other reasons, it may be in their best interest to have that paid right to the placement where they are. That is determined on a case-by-case basis. If they do, um, go into post-secondary, there's a number of training vouchers and NC REACH program, all available to children that age out. These programs both have different criteria. And they're also available to children that were, um, in foster care and adopted after, for one program is after age twelve and the others at, after age sixteen. But these programs can help with a whole lot of the requirements for post-secondary education. And then there is our LINKS, LINKS program. Uh, LINKS is not an acronym, it just stands for linking to resources. This program, LINKS, is actually available to all children in foster care starting at age thirteen, where we are, um, required to develop with children from age thirteen up, to start them on independent living, to start understanding budgeting, to understand, um, more positive decisions. We have a LINKS coordinated here, we'll do things like how to go shopping, how to, uh, apply for loans, open a bank account, those simple things. We start when they're teenagers and this program continues in eighteen and twenty-one. And there are what I would call like special funds, emergency type funds. If they maybe need help, help for a deposit, the first month's rent moving in, they, this, uh, the board rate we pay probably wouldn't cover both. So there are other transitional funds available to help these young adults. They are open for Medicaid services. And then the last thing we do is our ongoing, um, working with each young adult on their indivi- individualized goal. We have to meet with them as a support team every three months, but we also talk to them at least on a monthly basis, monitor where they're living, um, and just kinda giving them counseling. Depends on what they want. This is a very, um, individualized program based on every child, um, young adult. I have to keep reminding myself. As long as they meet that original criteria that they're either getting, um, education or they're employed, a lot of the rest of this is pretty flexible. So right now, we have three, uh, participants. And so far to this year, we've had one that aged out and that, um, young adult has chosen, chosen to enter the program. Last year, we had three age out, but only one chose to enter the program. In twenty eighteen, we had one out of two that entered the program. We anticipate, as I said earlier, that there will be one aging out this year and we expect him to enter the program. However, next year of our three anticipated, we only expect one to enter the program. One already resides in another state and we anticipate the other one will also move out of state. What I didn't talk out, sorry, is, um, there is some level of court involvement, but that, all that requires is that we go to the court. This is a federal requirement to say that the child's, uh, the young adult signed into this voluntary agreement and that's essentially all it takes. And we have to report to the court if we choose to close a case for a young adult that is not complying with criteria. There is no ongoing monitoring of the case.
Why would we expect that they would not want to be in the program?
They often, they, many of them want to be in the program. We've had one young adult female that tried to enter early this year, but she was unwilling to meet the criteria. She was not going to school and, um, unable to find employment and was not demonstrating, she wanted the financial assistance but was not doing her part to enroll or even look for an opportunity to improve herself.
Yes, you said that in, uh, twenty twenty-one, there's three eligible, one's expected to enter the program. Uh, one's expected to move out of state. So we just think that the third one's just not gonna want to be in the program. I mean, yeah, they say that, or?
Uh, that, and I might not be real clear on the slide. One of them already lives out of state with his foster parent, who's a relative. One, we expect to move out of state to go back to family. So those twenty-one, only one will be eligible and we do expect they will enter.
I understand now.
Yeah, we are doing a little better job of educating our youth about the benefits of this. But some of them honestly are a little bit tired of DSS in their lives and they wanna try it on their own. And many, well, not many of those, about half of them do come back later and ask about engagement. And that was one of the use I was just talking about. She wanted the funding, but she was not able to meet her end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your interest.
Any other questions?
Well, yeah, uh, of the one that lives out of state, how long do they stay in our care when they live out of state? Is that like a college student or, or placement with family members out of state? Or what does that mean?
Exactly, the child came into care when he and his mother lived in our state. Uh, since then, she moved out of state back to the state where her parents and, um, aunt and uncle lived. He's actually placed with grandparents at this time in that state. Um, so he's near his mother and his family members, but we don't transfer jurisdictions of cases. Once they come into care in our case, we have it until the case closes.
Is that true with all cases?
Pretty much, um, in my experience, I only had one case transfer and that was when we had, um, a mother that left North Carolina to go to Florida to try to avoid us and we already had two other siblings here in custody. So that case transferred to North Carolina so that siblings could be together. But typically, whatever county or state takes custody, they keep jurisdiction even if the family or, and the child moves. And most of the time, the child wouldn't move. Th- this is kind of an unusual circumstance.
What about, I mean, in, in general case, if a child comes into our custody and for whatever reason, things get wherever they need to be, but then they, they move to, like you said, to Florida. So until that child ages out at eighteen, they will be under our case, but being monitored by people in Florida? Is that how that works?
Well, yes, we ha- we go through what's called ICPC. It's an interstate program to request. They have to first approve the placement before we can even let the child go there with a relative and then they usually agree to monitor it. But we don't keep the case hopefully up until they age out. Hopefully, whatever relative that was, is willing to take guardianship or custody and we could close that case, giving them legal custody and not keep him in our care until he's, uh, eighteen.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Leanne, you wanna continue on?
Linda, will you just advance one more slide? And I will let you then, um, stop sharing just a second. I wanted to do just a quick senior center update so you, um, know where all three of our Health and Human Services programs are. The senior center remains closed ti- still temporarily. We don't know when that might change. We're just taking that, you know, week by week. Um, but that is a high-risk population. So I do, uh, anticipate them being closed for at least, at least, uh, through phase two. I don't see phase two opening and maybe not three. I, I really am not sure. We're just gonna monitor this virus and see when we feel like it's safe for that high-risk population to come back. Linda, you can stop share if you want to. And, um, I did wanna let you know though that staff are, we do have the staff, um, making calls, checking on our senior population because we have seen a really increased need for that senior population. Lots of food insecurities has been happening, um, which actually has been a nice, um, shared program between our Department of Social Services, Adult Protective Services, and that senior center staff have been working together to meet those needs, making phone calls, checking, um, and those senior center staff has also been helping it, the, um, Department of Social Services as well. So they've, they've been busy, we've been able to, um, find other things that they can do while we wait to see when this might end. Um, so that's where the senior center is. Um, and we've tried to put resources out there, you know, if, to let people know that, um, you know, if they're in need for something, reach out and let us know. We'll certainly try to meet that need. Because people are, it does seem like at this time, you know, people are more hesitant to ask their neighbors for help. They're not out and about and, um, you know, I, I certainly hate to think of anybody home without food, much less, um, our children and senior population. So we've also gotten, the Western People Council Government is, um, working on getting us some, uh, literature and activity books and things for them to do because, uh, those phone calls have meant a lot to that senior population. Um, they're really lonely and isolated and so those phone calls, um, do a lot of good. And you know, you think just a quick phone call, but some of them have lasted an hour. You know, they just needed somebody else. They've been home a week with no contact. You know, the TV's all, um, they have. So some really, um, destitute situations that, um, have been brought to our attention. So if there are needs, uh, don't hesitate to reach out. That's what we're here for. We'll, we'll find one program or another that will meet those needs. And that's your, um, consolidated board meeting, unless you have any other questions.
I have, uh, one more question for Linda, please. Um, Linda, do we ever have circumstances where any of our staff or workers are going to different states for any of our cases?
We do, the state actually requires, even though we have the other state helping us, um, our one worker try, actually goes to New Mexico every quarter. Um, because we have to do our face-to-face at least quarterly and the other state can do those visit. We're, we're required to see every child in foster care at least once a month at a minimum. Um, when they're out of state, we're allowed to use the other state for the two out of three months and a quarter. We have to do at least one of them ourselves.
I knew that and that's why I was asking the question so that people are aware that when they're in our custody or the cases here, that our workers still have to travel abroad.
Yeah.
Um, every so often to put a face-to-face with that child.
Yes, I know, and this month, we actually took advantage of Zoom because the other state has not been meeting our requests for the other months regularly. So we're, we're using other methods to keep contact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Leanne, and, uh, we appreciate you being here and all the information that, uh, you guys brought. Um, Mr. French, do we need to have a closed session?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, so, um, I guess we will adjourn out of the Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting. Um, and I'm trying to think how to, how to say this. So, um, um, we will, uh, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session per North Carolina Journal Statute one four three dash three eighteen point eleven, uh, to discuss contractual and personnel issues. Uh, we will, uh, come out of closed session for the, uh, purpose of adjournment out of the County Commissioners, uh, Board of County Commissioners and the Consolidated Human Services Board. out of the, uh, county commissioners, uh, board of county commissioners and the Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting. Um, I'll make that in the form of a motion. Thank you. Okay, um, all those in favor signify by a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for being here.